I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Seenor.
Here.
Alderwoman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Felgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCinso.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderman Tyland.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Quorum is present.
Thank you. I would accept the motion for the approval of the December 28, 2018 committee meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Madam Treasurer, would you please present your Treasury report?
Thank you, Chair Felgenzie. The Corporate Fund in the month of December had a beginning balance of $6,656,984. We took in total receipts of $7,919,317. We had total disbursements in the month of December of $7,470,213. And the Corporate Fund had an ending balance in the month of December of $7,106,88. Thank you, Chair Felgenzie. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Do we have an OBM contract report?
There is one available.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are there any questions regarding that? Any presentations?
No.
We have the ordinances table to remaining committee. Would you please read those?
2017-103, 2017-436, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-322, 2018-395, 2018-545.
Is there anyone like to remove any of these for consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the mayor if he would be against removing 2018-322. I think that that isn't going to go anywhere from here, and if we do, it will have to be rewritten.
That's fine.
So I'd like to make a motion to remove 2018-322 from the...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'd also like to ask about Mr. Zerkel, if you could please, on 2017-436, the whole attachment agreement with Ameren, I think you said that there were some changes or some movement on that not too long ago with Ameren, but I think, are we still being held up by the other agreements? Yes.
That, we could actually withdraw it and resubmit it because the agreement now has changed quite substantially.
Then I make a motion to withdraw 2017-436 as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now for the ordinances for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2019-002, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $250,000 under contract number UE-1701-84 with Prairie Land FS Incorporated for number two dyed fuel for the Electric Division Generation Department for a total amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
2019-003, an ordinance authorizing execution of a latter offer for extension approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $325,000 under contract number UE-1801-72 with Rowan Machinery Company for maintenance and repair of heavy equipment at Dollman Power Plant Complex, a total amount payable of $650,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I hate to bring this up, but last week when we were going to extend a contract, we ran into a lot of headway about extending the contract in the middle of the provisions. And, I mean, for consistency's sake, why are we moving to extend this contract when we wanted to extend a contract which the employees of unions were all in favor of extending? We decided not to extend it. I just want a clarification on what we're doing. When we wanted to extend the Health Works contract, they wanted to extend it from two years to three years. Can anyone answer their question for me?
Completely different situation.
But it's extending a contract. I mean, I understand, but I just want an explanation for consistency's sake.
Maybe someone from the utility can come up and talk us through this one?
John?
I'm not sure what contract you're referring to that pertains to this, but on this contract, we went out for bids last year. They were 11% cheaper than the next bidder. They agreed to just take the escalation that's built in the contract for another year extension. How this pertains to what you did last week, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know what contract you're referring to from previously.
Just the fact that we're extending a contract, an extra year that we put contracts, these contracts out for bid every year, or whenever they come due to go out for an R, we send an RFP out for them, and we're extending it in the middle of, in the middle of the contract, I guess. Just want some clarification.
Well, we have a process that we go through that we worked out a number of years ago with OBM on questions that we ask a contractor if we're going to extend it. We have provisions in the contract to extend this.
Okay.
And they were the low bid. It was a conceal competitive bid originally, and if they maintain these aspects, we believe it's still going to be cheaper, we have the right to extend it. That's all we're doing there.
So the contingency in the contract, in the RFP also, that allows you to extend this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Hanauer.
And I think what, in respect to the, I think you're talking about the Leadwell. Is that the one you're talking about?
I'm just talking about any contract in general, not any one in specific, just extending a contract in the middle of its term.
Well, on the, in the case of the Leadwell, it was, we were extending the contract overall, where in this one, they're just, they've got in the contract where they can do renewals.
Exercising.
Exercising the renewals, so I thought that might be the one you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Brown stated. I just wanted clarification on why we're extending and what allowed us to extend this one.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
2019-004, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE-19-10-57, electric power line components with NXER Incorporated and Power Line Supply Company in a total amount not to exceed $294,728.70 for the Electric Transmission Distribution and Operations Department for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Public Safety, 2019-005, an ordinance authorizing a sole source purchase of two Pierce Enforcer custom pumper apparatus, bid number 1012, from Global Emergency Products for an amount not to exceed $1,200,000, and authorizing a short-term loan from the Corporate Fund 001 to Fund 094 for an amount not to exceed $1,200,000 for said purchases for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for debate.
Second.
You got a motion for debate also?
Second for debate.
I'll withdraw the consent motion.
Any discussion? Yes. Alderman Redpath?
Chief, could you come up, please? I just, I wanted to ask, I've already did a little bit of inquiries on why we're doing this. Could you just tell us a little bit why we, what your thought process is about this contract and why we're sticking with the Pierce people and that kind of thing?
Oh, specifically on Pierce? Our entire fleet is Pierce. It's kind of the same reason, you know, we've got two mechanics that are very familiar with them. We actually hired them from Global, which is where these vehicles be purchased from. And it's just, it's worked well, good customer service. We haven't had any problems. Any problems we have had with them has been fixed. Anything we've identified, plus they're close. Our KME right now is in Pennsylvania.
How long have we been using the Pierce product?
Since I had this job.
Probably...
Twenty, twenty-plus years, yeah. We've got a few outliers. We have a KME truck, and then some of our reserves are Laverns that I believe were bought in the mid-'90s.
Mr. McCarty, could you tell me how we're doing the money? This money's coming out of the budget, correct? So could you explain that, please?
Yes, be happy to, Alderman. So the reasoning for doing this is, as you know, the mayor's proposal for next year's budget is to do a $4.3 million equipment replacement program, which we will fund with local financing as we've done the last five or six years on several occasions. The reason this is before you now for your consideration, and it's completely up to the council, is because if we were to approve this agreement and process and pay, by February 1st, we will save the city about $80,000 on both the new rigs and the refurbishment. That's why these two ordinances are in front of you for your consideration today.
So how's the repayment plan work? Is that the same way you did it, what, three years ago with the equipment purchase?
Yes, so we set up equipment financing on a latter approach, starting in 2011, 2012. It was something that our office started doing because we found that there was a real need for new equipment that just wasn't being met, and it's worked really well. It's a latter approach to financing, so we do some financing, and then it runs out, and then we can go out and do some more financing every two or three years. That's what we've got in place. That's how we're going to fund this in the budget as part of the Fund 94 transfer that you, that's done every year. We have some financing that is original chase financing from 2012. That is now, we're in the final year of that, so we'll be able to do some more financing in order to pay for this. What's being proposed is a short-term loan from the Corporate Fund for $1.2 million. What we will do is, if the council approves, we will then go ahead and move forward, and assuming the council is going to pass the proposed budget, and that's what you all have to consider, with that equipment plan, we'll go out, we'll get the financing, we'll repay Corporate Fund the $1.2 million out of that financing.
Well, I guess my question's getting to, how's this going to affect our future budgets? Is there a payment plan going out now for the prior purchases? I mean, for the prior equipment stuff? And will it be folded into that, or will it be an additional amount that we're going to have to deal out every year?
There will be no more additional amount. Right now, there is a standard 1% transfer from the Corporate in a Fund 94 and a 2% transfer into Fund 95. We're utilizing that 1% transfer amount. So assuming that continues, and I believe that's in city code, we will use that. We will not be asking for any new revenue beyond that standard annual transfer.
That's how we did it with the prior.
That's how we've been doing it for a number of years. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, my question, my understanding is that we haven't purchased a new engine in, I know over four years, how long has that been?
I believe Engine 4 is right at four years old.
Okay. And was Engine 4 the only one purchased that year?
I believe so, yes.
The fleet is quite old.
Yeah, the biggest problem we have is our spare fleet, which, I mean, every week, every day, really, right now Engine 10's in a spare that's 24-years-old. It's a 24-year-old vehicle going to emergencies, so that's what we're trying to avoid.
Well, you know, we've, I've had conversations with prior chiefs about Pierce and, you know, been told that, you know, what you stated earlier about the quality and so forth, but, I mean, I think since our fleet is so old, and it is predominantly a Pierce fleet, it just, it goes to show that it is quality, quality equipment, and it is going to serve the city of Springfield well. If we purchase, if we were to proceed with this ordinance and purchase the two, and let's say the next one passes as well, the refurbishment, what, you know, what's the plan, like next year or the year after? I mean, do you have a plan in place to, as far as purchasing? I know you probably...
No, you know, yes, absolutely. And this is a conversation I've had with Director McCarty. We have, this will set us up well for engines. We will be set up very well for engines. We're going, we'll start getting into the Quantums will be the next group. Those are engines that we purchased in maybe 2004. That'll be, but there, I do not anticipate, short of a catastrophic event, any need for fire engines or a truck, which is considerably more expensive, until the probably fiscal year '22 budget.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. I want to let you know, I'm 100% for getting trucks. My concern is, and I know we're going to, we are going to have quite a few meetings on it, but last quarter, I thought you came and told us we were running real tight with money, and now all of a sudden, it's like a Christmas miracle, we've got all kinds of money, according to what's coming up in the budget. And, I mean, again, I'm 100% for having the fire trucks. We need them. I mean, we're trying to make do, refurbishing them, trying to save money that way, but I'm concerned that, so we buy the trucks, and then, you know, we get down toward the end of the, you know, toward, I don't know, next January, next November or so, and all of a sudden, it wasn't such a great hoopla budget, and, I mean...
Yeah, well, I guess my response is, it's not so much a Christmas miracle as it is good long-term planning, and that's what we put in place, starting in 2012. It's worked well. I actually have plans for debt to go into debt and buy equipment for the next seven or eight years, all the way through fiscal year '27 on my desktop. So we do have a plan, and as long as the 1% transfer that's in city code continues, we will be able to do equipment replacement programs every few years because of our latter approach. So it really comes down to whether or not the council would be committed to continuing the 1% transfer going forward.
Well, and because the question I have is, Alderman Donlin, for the last two years in the budget, has tried to get a fire truck or something. We've tried to get, we've all tried to get different equipment for public works, and we were told there was just no money. I mean, and I guess that's a frustrating thing for us. Why couldn't we have gotten one last year? You know, it just seems like all of a sudden, we've got a windfall or something, and...
It's because it didn't fit into the plan, and it's not because, it's not, it's a matter of timing, in so much that we have a plan, and it works. It didn't work a year or two ago because we couldn't afford to make the debt coverage payments until the other financing ran out.
Is there a way we can kind of, can you get us the plan so we all know what we're looking at in the next...
I'd be happy to send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could.
I defer to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think Director McCarty can correct me if I misspeak, but I think it's just like your loan, if you're, it's on a revolving three-year loan. So once that three years is up, the previous equipment purchases expire, then it allows us to continue on with the next three years. Is that correct?
Yes, in essence, what we're doing is, had we gone out a year or two ago, and I know equipment's important to the council, I've heard Alderman Donlin and others mention it, and I assure you, it's important to the administration. We want to make sure that we've got newer vehicles that are out there providing service to the citizens of this community. It's just, what can we afford, and more importantly, when can we afford it? Had we purchased a year or two ago, we would have doubled up debt payments, and that 1% transfer that I keep speaking of, that's part of the plan, wouldn't have been enough to make those debt coverage payments.
So is there other mitigating factors as why you need to do this before February 1st? Is there some sense of, Director McCarty, you might be able to answer, is there some sense of...
From the, from the Fire Department, that's our only sense of urgency, is that it'll save, $73,000 is our number, $73,000, we do it before February 1st.
Is that due to, I guess, industry norms, or were they increased prices or something that's coming up?
You are 100% correct. There's two things at play here. Number one, Pierce's fiscal year begins February 1st. They do a 3% annual increase every February 1st. So if we have the agreement in place prior to that, we get the current year's prices. The other thing is, if we pay upfront, which is the purpose of the $1.2 million short-term loan, we also get another incentive. Each one is roughly $30,000, $35,000 in savings. The incentive and the avoiding the price increase.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath?
I understand that savings is a great plan. I just, I think we're going to be looking forward to having other purchases like police cars and public works trucks, too, when we get to the budget part of this. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman McMenamin?
So I understand a lot of what's going on here. We want to save $73,000 by making a commitment now, and I understand what Director McCarty was saying, that last budget season, all our funds in Fund 94, which is for equipment purchases, were committed for previously made short-term installment purchases on equipment. So next year, those loans will be paid off, and so there's new money available in Fund 94 to do another, I guess this is going to be a three-year installment purchase of equipment. My questions have to do more with the way this is presented to us and how the monies are moving around. Bill McCarty, could you tell us when the monies will move from funds, from the Corporate Fund to Fund 94?
When the city, if and when the city council approves, the ordinances and they're signed, we'll effectuate a transfer from the Corporate Fund and move that over to Fund 94, and then we'll issue the payment to Pierce for those engines.
Could you just give like an approximate date when that might be, Bill?
End of January, beginning of February.
Okay, during this fiscal year?
It will be this fiscal year, that's correct.
So the funds will move from Fund, the Corporate Fund, $1.2 million to the Equipment Fund 94 this fiscal year, is that right?
That is correct.
You expect it to. And then when will the funds move out of Fund 94, during this fiscal year?
Not this fiscal year, the next fiscal year. When we enter into the, well, we assume it'll be local financing for the equipment replacement program, approximately $4.3 million.
So why don't we just move the funds, obligate ourselves on this contract, but move the funds from Corporate Fund to Fund 94 next fiscal year?
Because we have to make the payment in advance.
Okay, well, this is all leading up to saying that I think we're really over-obligating ourselves, this is just talking about whether we should call this a supplemental appropriation or not, because I'm sure we haven't approved this amount of funding out of Fund 001, so this should really be, this is just a semantic thing in part, but when we have supplemental appropriation, it clues us into the fact that we're authorizing more funds to be paid out than what we had agreed to in the budget. So if we can make that, if you agree with that, Bill, if we can just change that and say it's a supplemental appropriation, I think it solves my question about this. We just want to make sure that when we get an ordinance, we can tell whether it's a supplemental or not, so we can correctly identify what's happening.
Yes, there should be, and if there isn't, we'll need to get that in there. Of course, there would have to be a supplemental appropriation as well in Fund 94 in order to make the purchase.
Thanks a lot.
Does that come in a special ordinance, or is it built into this ordinance?
If it's not part of this ordinance, and I don't remember, because I've been on vacation, we can add it as an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, Chief. When, if this passes, what's the expected delivery date of the two new vehicles?
Nine months.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
2019-006, an ordinance authorizing Global Emergency Products to refurbish a 2002 Pierce dash truck, known as Engine 2, for an amount not to exceed $227,537 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
2019-007, an ordinance authorizing execution of contract number FD-19-12-72 with Merrill Brothers Ford Incorporated for purchase of two 2007 AWD utility interceptors for an amount not to exceed $74,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to debate. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Again, I think this one is also, should be called a supplemental, and when we call things supplemental, it's not really a minor point, now that I think about it, because, as I recall, supplemental appropriations require a supermajority vote from the council. So we got to designate ordinances when they're supplementals or not. So, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do you see that 2017 versus 2007?
I'll let Corporation Council know, thank you.
That'll be a spacecraft if it's 2007.
Will tell Leadwell, thank you.
A couple of things, Chief. What are interceptors? What exactly are they? They the, like the mini-rigs, or...
No, these are, these are staff vehicles to move people. These are for, these are for us. These look just like the police cars you see running around. Those are police interceptors, that's what this is. Basically a Ford...
Explorer.
Explorer, yeah.
Are the, is there a reason, were these budgeted for then, in the past?
To answer your question, I have to talk about cardiac monitors. And we had planned to purchase a few cardiac monitors out of this budget. We have the money in this budget, but we hit a snag. This, what you see before you, our plan was to include this in next year's budget. However, cardiac monitors and these Ford interceptors are roughly the same price. So because we had to go away from the cardiac monitors, we decided just to flip our priorities from one year to the next. The biggest snag we hit with the cardiac monitors was to, we're not sure we can get them fixed locally, which is a big difference price-wise if we have to ship them down to Barnes or back to the manufacturer. So our EMS committee is working on that. They're going to come up with recommendations. So this, what you see, would have been part of a budget presentation next week. We were just simply flipping our priorities. We're not buying cardiac monitors this year.
So it's not, so it's not, this would not be a supplemental appropriation if we had it in the budget already, correct?
That gets way out of my lane. The answer is no.
If it's already, if there's equipment money in the budget, they're just simply buying something different than what they had intended, but the appropriation authority is already there.
Okay, that's, I just was wondering, because if it was on next year, my next question was, why do we have to do it now? But I understand, and I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, these vehicles will not be in part, these, the police interceptors will not be part of next year.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I made the motion for debate. I'd like to withdraw that motion, make the motion for consent.
I need a second, I'm not withdrawing my second, so.
Okay, that's fine. Alderman Turner?
So cardiac monitors are a bit different than cars. So is that in the same, in the budget, Director McCarty? Is that, would that come in the same line item, cardiac monitors and cars?
No, it wouldn't be. I believe that the plan was to just flip, these Explorers are going to be part of that equipment loan we just talked about, so...
That's not my question. Alderman McMenamin just raised an issue with regard to supplemental and how we're budgeting things. And so now we're looking at the same amount of money, but it's obviously coming from a different line item. So how does that affect, what effect does that have on this year's budget as opposed to when these automobiles were going to be purchased next year?
It doesn't have an effect on this year's budget because he's not buying the cardiac monitors and instead is buying these cars, which are the same. The cardiac monitors next year, or the, is this the defibrillator stuff that we talked about?
The defibrillators, yes.
Yeah, so that'll be part of the equipment purchase, that originally these SUVs were going to be part of, so it's just flipping. It's six one half dozen another.
So these automobiles were, when we approved the budget for the cardiac monitors that were in the equipment line, so these automobiles would be in that same equipment line?
Yes.
Okay, so what are, what are these automobiles replacing? Are they replacing something?
So the good news is, we get a lot of miles, we get a lot of years out of vehicles because we keep very low miles. The vehicle I drive is a 2007 Ford Taurus. The difficulty that we have, and really over the course of my career, we've gone away from vehicles. We've sold eight vehicles at auction the last five years. We've gotten rid of a lot of our ancillary vehicles, but a lot of those vehicles used to carry equipment for the divers, the tech team, things like that. Where we've gone to, Station 10's a perfect example, at the fairgrounds. We've got an air trailer, we've got a boat, and an ATV. We have things that we have to tow around, but we don't have vehicles to tow them with. It's a more cost-effective, long-term plan, and it was a wise decision by whichever administration did that then, when they switched from having things loaded into vehicles to putting them on trailers. It saves us space, but even the response we had to help the citizens of Taylorville a few weeks ago, my vehicle was completely useless in that, to where we couldn't, we couldn't move people or equipment effectively with that vehicle.
So these are going to be used to tow things?
Well, then, to run errands around, do what we do, you're not going to see a trailer hooked up to it every day, but that's one of the things that we have identified as a priority, that anybody that's on call... that anybody that's on call, I take call every six weeks, Chief Richmond takes call every six weeks. When we're on, when we're on call, we're running around in vehicles that we can't run up and grab an air trailer, we can't grab a boat, we can't tow things out when we have a water rescue. We've had six water rescues this year, and it just makes it difficult. We're having to send other on-duty, on-duty crews across town to pick up equipment that there's really but for lack of that ability. And that's just one aspect. I mean, the other aspect is, it's just they're, they're at their end of life. They're, the vehicles, we're not replacing anything that's new or is very useful. One of the other things that I identified very quickly was, we often have crews that need relief at the scene. So if you get a fire at 5:30 in the morning, at 7:00 AM, we try to switch people out, the crew that's coming on. And when we do that, commonly, most people just use their personal vehicle, but when we're sitting there at staff duty, we're not able to move those people and equipment in our, in our passenger vehicles.
Okay.
All in favor?
Chief, one of the things that you mentioned, you mentioned how you've sold off several of the vehicles in the last five years at auction, and you're saying that you're finding that these vehicles are not very useful to you right now. Is it your intention, when you get these, that you'll be repurposing those other vehicles?
If I'd open my book, that was actually in my notes. That is one of the advantages too, is if we have a vehicle that can cross divisions, and yes, absolutely, you know, if we're able to steadily purchase as the budget, we purposely waited until the end of this budget cycle to make sure we had the money in there for what we thought were gonna be cardiac monitors. Obviously, if we'd have spent that on other things, we just would not have purchased those monitors this year. And really with the vehicles, if we're able to come up with a reasonable replacement plan, again, we get, you know, with our shop and the miles, there's no reason to think that these vehicles won't last 12 years.
But the existing...
And then to be able to then push them over to Division Two, where our fire investigators are, our inspectors, that would be ideal. That would be the purpose.
Yeah, because I believe in another conversation you and I had about equipment, maybe last month, you said that a lot of the passenger vehicles and other things that you guys have are, excuse me, 15, 20 years old.
I've got the newest one. It's a 2007.
And most of the others, it's fair to say that there's a fair number of them that were produced before 2000?
I don't, I honestly don't know. I don't have that in front of me. But yes, I would think that would be fair to say.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
General City Business, 2019-008, resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing amendment to Chapter 155, Section 1555.111, access to off-street parking facilities.
Any discussion?
Move to debate.
Second.
I was gonna say, if you didn't mind, this could be held in committee. This is actually part of the developers' agreement amendments, and so that language is actually still being worked on. So if you could hold this in committee, so you can consider it all at the same time, I think it would be more useful.
Hold my motion.
And, but could you just briefly explain what this is first, and what this is?
This is referring to, as you know, we, the city council, through the state law and the city code, by resolution, has to refer changes to the zoning code through the normal zoning process. That's what this resolution is doing, because it's proposing a change, a modification, to certain language that is in the zoning code relating to off-street parking facilities. This language is part of the amendments that are still under discussion with the, under the chamber and the developers' group and Public Works, and it refers, for example, to certain sections that haven't been adopted yet. So this is, ultimately, what this is going to do is to cause the zoning component to be consistent with the other amendments, but you don't have the other amendments yet.
All right, thank you.
Alderman, Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What would be helpful to me, Mr. Zerkel, is when, as these changes are being, becoming close to being finalized, it would be helpful to, I'd love to have a meeting with you, maybe, I know a couple of us can meet with, at a time, and be briefed before it gets to an ordinance form, because, you know, we may have questions or input that might be beneficial to the process, rather than being brought in at the last minute. Thank you.
Any other question? We're holding this in committee then, is that right?
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Do I have to take a vote on that?
No, if you, if you take no action, it'll simply remain in committee. Thank you.
2019-009, an ordinance approving the appointment of Jeff Tucker to the Springfield Municipal Band Commission.
Debate, second.
Is Mr. Tucker here? Would you like to? State your name and address for the council.
I'm Jeff Tucker. I live at 1000 Diane Court.
Would you like to always put a name to the face?
Okay.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
I was afraid you'd ask that. I am self-employed. I have the great good fortune to be married to Trudy Fleming. I think I could probably do some good on the commission, and unless you have a direct question, I'm gonna stop talking.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to serve the city.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Tucker, you've served as a teacher, is that correct?
I used to teach, yes. I was in the district's alternative ed program at Webster School.
You've been involved in international music activities, is that correct?
A little bit, yes. Yes, I was involved in a couple of international tours with the Fleming Academy. I helped organize those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you all.
I just have, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
So I know there are currently three, three individuals on this commission with Mr. Tucker. That'll be four. What's the statutory number of individuals that would make the board fully, fully equipped?
Alderman Turner, five.
Five?
Right, and I am working on trying to find.
I was just curious, because it seemed like a small number, so it's only five? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
2019-010, an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one, China King Restaurant LLC DBA, Elsa located at 120 North Grand Avenue West.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold this in committee for two weeks. Second.
Do we have to take a vote?
No.
2019-0011, an ordinance amending Chapter 37 by adding Section 37.34 of the 1988 City of Springfield, Illinois Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to reimbursement of tax increment finance funds.
Any discussion?
Question, what does this involve?
We have a motion.
We got a motion.
Move to consent.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Consent.
Consent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you. Alderman, this is, this is a ordinance that, we introduced a similar ordinance last year, I believe early last year, and there were some questions about it, and I pulled that ordinance off the agenda, and with an understanding that I would speak with the mayor and Corporation Council about tweaking it a little bit. And essentially, that's the same, it's essentially the same ordinance, but the intent is that for larger TIF projects, unless otherwise authorized by the council, so projects that would be receiving over $750,000 of reimbursement of tax increment financing funds, that the reimbursement would not take place until the project has been completed and after they receive any, if there's a temporary occupancy or an occupancy certificate that's granted, until that's done. So in other words, the intent is to put for these larger projects, the risk upon the developer. In other words, the city is not outlaying, outlaying a major amount of money until the work is completed. And that's, that's the goal. Now, there isn't really a one-size-fits-all. That's why the beginning of the, the new language says unless otherwise approved by city council. So for example, if we had a redevelopment agreement that allowed for a reimbursement for a certain project as it went along, there's, I think Park South is probably a good example. It's a, it was a large project where Fiedalis, as most of you know in the room, was located. It wouldn't have made sense to have waited until the entire project was done. It would make sense to do it as it goes along. And so this just, I think, puts the city in a stronger position. That's the goal, and that's really the essence. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mayor, thank you for agreeing to be the cosponsor and your involvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, you hit upon one of my questions was, because some of the projects do require that kind of incremental approach, like you mentioned.
Right.
So this would not stop anything like that, that they could continue to do something like that.
Right. And really, since, you know, we have, we don't have it written in stone, but we have more or less a 30% rule. In other words, the total project, we wouldn't use 30%. So if it's the number 750 that's in the ordinance, we're really talking about a $2.5 million project. So larger projects.
Okay. And so, because like, we hit upon this, I think, a couple of weeks ago, where that one-third amount is really not in statute anywhere. It's just more of an administrative policy here that the city has. Do you think that something like this would project something otherwise out to the general public that, it would be the intent that it would have to be reimbursed at the end? Do you think there'd be some miscommunication like that? Because some projects, I think, do get a little bit more than the third, you know, depending on their thing and their merit. Do you think there'd be any unintended consequences?
I don't think so, as long as it's communicated, you know, correctly. But, you know, one of the things, as an example, you know, if we had a project come along, and again, this is pie in the sky stuff, but if we had a project come along that was going to employ 1,000 people in one of our TIF districts, obviously, that's very important to this community. That would be a big deal. You know, I mean, I would encourage this council at that time, if the need was to fill a gap higher than 30%, we would consider that. So there's, there's, that's, that's the, that's the beauty of, I think, the way we operate. We have the staff that does obviously a lot of homework and analyzes projects and brings performance to us, and we, by the time it gets to us, we have the ability to provide some flexibility based on the impact of the community. So thank you.
Alderman Turner?
So I think you answered my, excuse me, I think you answered my question though. So this would, if it, so this would be the final reimbursement. There would be no incremental reimbursement. This would be just one reimbursement at the end of the project, unless it was included in the developers' agreement.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
All in favor?
I would like to offer, if you're willing, to be a cosponsor.
More, more the mayor.
Add me, please.
Noted. Thank you.
Question?
Alderman McMiniman?
So Alderman Taylor, with our larger projects that might take a couple of years to complete, that might involve, let's say, a three or four million dollar TIF contribution, it would seem to me that this will obligate the developer to go out and get a bridge loan. And the interest rates are rising on loans, so let's say he does calculate, you know, $3 million times 5% times two years, or something like that. So the cost to the developer will go up with this approach, correct, because we won't pay the developer incrementally. The developer will have to wait for reimbursement once the project is completed.
I guess theoretically, that means, you know, it depends on the type of financing, the type of arrangements a developer could, would make with a, with a private institution. You know, the ci, as you know, Alderman, with any redevelopment agreement, the city's agreeing to specific terms. In other words, a specific dollar amount, what, what is reimbursable, and, you know, by the time it gets to us, it's typically flushed out by staff and the EDC, and I think that's why it's important to have the language in there, that unless otherwise authorized by council. So in other words, unless, you know, this is the way it is, unless the redevelopment agreement as Alderman Turner, Alderman Turner outlined specifies otherwise, because we got, we should have some flexibility. I think it only makes sense. But the goal is really to put the, the goal is to upfront, put more of a, the risk on the developer for larger projects, and if, and put the citizens in a stronger position. It's really that simple. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Any other unfinished questions?
Yes, please.
Alderman Turner?
I apologize for not being prepared completely at the beginning, but ordinance is tabled remaining committee, number 2018-395, I believe was linked to a variance request in zoning that did not pass in September. So I think it's my ward, so I believe we can withdraw this one as well. So I'm, a motion to withdraw 2018-395.
Second. Any other unfinished questions? Any need?
I just wanted to thank Doug Brown for, I asked for some specific information about power outages in Ward Six last week, and he got the information to me very quickly. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for that.
Chief Winslow, I brought email printout from an email that I forwarded to you yesterday. Apparently, we've had an abandoned car at, on South Douglas for several months. I believe that would be the police department that checks on that, correct?
Yeah, if you would like to just take this, I'd just like to get this dealt with. It's been there for several months. Apparently, the constituent contacted the police department directly and got no results.
Got the budget hearing start Thursday, I think, at 5:30, is that correct, Director McCarty, with the elected officials in Lincoln Library and, of course, the automatic coordinator's office? Do you want to run through the other ones, or is that online as well as the portal for the public?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I believe it's all the elected officials in the library, and that looks like, and of course, we'll do the OBM overview to start it all off.
And is the portal online right now, where the public can access the budget information yet? When will that be online?
I'm not sure. We'd have to talk to ISD about that.
Okay. Hopefully, that'll be up tomorrow, where the public can come online and view the parameters of the budget.
Yeah, Council Coordinator's Office was contacted regarding this. City legal, is there any written contract with the railroad regarding cutting weeds?
We do not, to my knowledge. I don't think there is a contract with the railroad between the city via Public Works and so on relating to cutting the weeds.
Okay. I know Director Mahoney's been in contact with the Union Pacific, but that's something that will continually...
That has been proposed, is my understanding, from Public Works, but the railroad has not responded with that.
We'll have Director Mahoney give an update next week.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I have a similar issue. There's a lot that was purchased, I believe, by the city for the rail relocation, and it's not being taken care of at all. Every couple weeks or once a month, the neighbor contacts me and says the grass hasn't been mowed, or there's leaves everywhere, and Director Mahoney is aware of the situation. But we can't be buying these properties and just letting them fester until something's done.
Right. We'll have him give an update.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I've had some more inquiries about some lots that were on, once on the bid list, and people bid on them, and they pulled them off and wouldn't follow through on the bid. So there's some question as to why that's happening. So if I could get someone to answer those questions for me on those specific lots, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, and I gotta follow, I gotta follow up to Herman's question, too. I, why don't we, if we've got lots that you, that we think are worth some, you know, where we might be able to get some development out of them, why don't we put them, why don't we put them up for sale through a realtor or something, and see if we can get them sold that way? And then if they don't sell, give it three months or something. If they don't sell, then we, then we go out and we put them on the RFP, because we can hold these all we want, but... put them on the RFP. Because we can hold these all we want, but, you know, what's our plan on moving forward? If you're, if we're waiting for someone to come to us, a lot of times, that's not going to happen. I think we need to put it out, have the, have a realtor, you know, put it out on the MLS or whatever, see if we, if we can get it sold. If it doesn't sell, then, then, then we put it out on the, on the RFP for, with the other lots. But, we got to get off the, we got to get these back to tax rolls. We can't afford to keep, we can't afford to...
You're going to answer the process?
We can't afford, and we don't have the manpower to keep the lots that we have cut. And we need to, I think we need to liquidate these as quick as possible.
That's what we want.
Corporation council will go through the process.
I was going to say that under the, under the state law, there's a process for declaring properties surplus. The first, I think it was the first set have gone through. I think there's approximately 13 of the lots, I think, that will be closing in the next couple of weeks. There were some, where there were some interest, but they were being, I think, held back pending a development plan in one area. And then, there's the second set of properties that are going to, I think, go out for RFP, I think, in the next couple of weeks. And I think if Cassandra's here, she might be able to address it. But, my understanding was that the STR actually was going to assist in some respects, maybe put an interactive map online, or at least show the areas where each of the lots were going to be. So, that next wave is going to be coming here pretty shortly.
That's one of the problems, Mr. Zerkel. These, some of the lots I'm concerned about have already been put out for bid on the RFP, and people have responded to that. And now, and now you're telling us tonight that we're pulling some of those back because there's a development agreement that we want, or some, certain development, we want certain areas. You just, wait a minute, that's what you just said. We pulled some back because we wanted to see if we could develop them in a certain area. And if there, that's the case, and we have, or you have lots, or the city has lots that we want to hold for development, we should know that. And those shouldn't even have gone out for the RFP to let people bid on. So, there's a miscommunication somewhere, or something's fallen down, somebody's done something that, so there's all confusion out there. So, we need to know what the proper process is. So, when we get inquiries, we can tell the people what exactly is going on with the lots.
Yeah, if we could get the specific addresses, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, corporation council. So, just for everybody's understanding, the first part of the process would, it has to be declared surplus property by the city council, and we put it out for RFP. And I think that's what you're getting at, Alderman. Senior, those went out on an RFP, people present their plan, and then the next step would be, it comes back for approval by the council.
Well, people bid on those.
For the sale of those properties. Is that correct, corporation council?
Well, the process actually is to, once it's declared and the RFP is, it goes out, then the, it can proceed with the regular because the RFP process allows for that. But, you're talking about very small amounts, you know. You might have a bid for perhaps $100 for a lot and that sort of thing.
Now, I'm saying, some people have already bid on those, and those have been pulled back from them because they, they were told that there's a plan in place to, for another development.
Well, we can get the exact addresses. There were several that were presented. My memory is, there's, I think, 13 or 14 that are going to be closing in the next couple of weeks of that initial set of interest. And what I can do, or what Cassandra do is give you a list of those where the ones are proceeding now.
I'm not talking about the ones that are proceeding. I'm talking about the ones that you pulled.
But, we can get the list of the ones that didn't.
I understand, but, okay. And that's the point I'm trying to make. We put these out there, and people bid on them, then we pull them back because of other information that we're not getting. We need to get that information beforehand. So, we're not going around and having this conversation now.
Everyone.
And Alderman Hanauer's issue is different from Alderman Senior's issue. I think that the lots that Alderman Senior is talking about with the problems are those small lots that you were referencing that are like $50, $100 for side yards and those kinds of things. I think what Alderman, not to put words in your mouth, but...
No, go ahead.
I think what Alderman Hanauer is talking about, and I share his concern, is those other larger lots that the city owns that could be used for some type of...
Commercial.
Commercial or retail development that we're holding on to, that nobody knows that we have them. So, unless we figure out some way to advertise those so that people know that we have them, and people know that they're available, they, they're just going to sit. Because those aren't the ones that people are going to just automatically be driving around town and say, "Oh, I think I want to buy that lot. I want to build an office building there" or something.
Yeah, I'd ask...
So, I think that's the other, that's the other issue, right?
You're 100% correct.
Yeah, I'd ask Doug Brown to come up, because we've had this Days Inn property comes to mind on Stevenson Inn, or Stevenson Drive, and yet to get an appraisal. I think he's in the process of doing that. So, if you'd want to bring everybody up to speed on that, or the properties that, a lot of the properties on Stevenson Drive is actually owned by CWLP.
Right.
And we lease those.
Right.
And so, that's what we're taking a look at, is what's the financial advantage of holding those leases? Or does it make more sense? And that, the reason to hold the leases would be to protect the utility. But, if it makes sense to put those out to the open market, that's what we're trying to analyze right now. So, if you want to go over...
Yeah, so, with, well, obviously, the Days Inn is a vacant property now. But, as well as we own the Stevenson Inn property, La Fiesta, Wilkerson's, you know, those are properties that we might consider selling. Because basically, the, one of the things that we have a more, of a concern in the future, near future, is our water distribution facility, it's Mason and 11th Street, is going to be impacted by the rail going through as it, as it got moved. So, they're taking more of that property now. So, that's going to impact operations for them. So, they're probably going to have to move. So, as we do that, we need to figure out how we're going to fund a new building, an additional property. And one of the ways is maybe to look at maybe selling this, this property. And then, Days Inn is, that's a good place to allow some development to occur on Stevenson Drive as well. So...
It's an excellent place to allow some development.
And corporation council can correct me on the process. We have to get an appraisal first for the property, put it out there for bid, I guess, or for best offer? Or how would that work, corporation council?
That's one area that we're going to take a close look at. If it's part of a, there's been some interest on the Days Inn property. There's been some interest with the Stevenson Inn location. But, I think the expectation there was perhaps the building would be gone there. And there's, the Stevenson Inn. And there's a cost involved with that. And then, there's more of a, a little bit of a strategic plan for the utility to decide what properties along there might be appropriate to, given their location. In fact, they're already commercially developed, may be appropriate for the city to consider basically selling those. And then, I think the thought was, at least in part, was the areas that might be in, Doug can correct me, but the areas that would be east of the Bob Evans would be retained because there's certain large gas, you know, lines there and so on that feed the power plant. So, all of that is presently being looked at very carefully, and it is intertwined in part with what Doug is indicating about possible relocation of the existing facility there along 10th because of the railroad relocation. So, it, it kind of all fits together.
And one of the things we've been looking at more recently is actually, I mean, people talking about real estate, you know, agents and stuff like that, is we used to have a real estate person on staff for the utility that handled all of our leased properties and everything. And that was kind of done away with quite a few years ago here, maybe five or so years. We're looking at maybe trying to bring that person, filling that position back again. Because it's, we've obviously had stumbling blocks, I think, with managing leases with, with not really the, maybe the best personnel to be in charge. So, we're looking at possibly doing that again. So...
Yeah, just to clarify, the properties I'm concerned with on 1900 East Cedar and 2000 East Pine. So, they don't have anything to do with the properties on Stevenson Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, before you, before you go, just a quick question. This is the first I've heard about the building, the potential building. What's the anticipated cost of this relocation?
We, we don't know. I mean, we just found out that basically, when Public Works were looking at having to move the tracks over, they kind of laid it out to us that they're going to be taking basically a good section of the laydown area and parking area for that facility. So, basically, we're going to have to look at moving off of that site. There's, there's really no worse to move north or south in that area, just because of what's going on with that, with the whole issue with the rail track relocation. So, we haven't done a cost estimate yet for that.
No ballpark even?
No, no, no ballpark even. Now, we are working on, you know, we've talked about it on budget before, for our transmission distribution facility that's on 11th Street and Miller. And we're in the process of that right now, as far as doing, working with an architect to try to figure out what a cost might be. No numbers are final yet, but, you know, hopefully, maybe in a few months, we might be able to come and show what that might look like. Because that's, that's also including moving ISD out of the basement of this building for all our servers, and putting both facilities into a hardened facility.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I can, just related to the topic that Alderman Senior brought up, what happens if, in the process, Mr. Zerkel, if, you know, there's an RFP, RFP put out, and there is no offer, or nobody was, you know, says, "Hey, I want to buy this lot for $100." Then what happens? Can we sell them to whomever, or for any dollar amount? Or how does it work?
Presently, if there's no offer, then the city's just going to retain it. So, we would have to rethink or re-discuss what's the next step, and how low do you want to, you know, how low do we want to go in terms of being able to try to get perhaps an adjoining property owner? The new RFP has got some preferences in there. You may recall that there was a discussion about trying to give a preference to perhaps a adjoining property owner. So, some of that is starting to be incorporated in this next go-around. But, I would think what we're going to end up with is what, we'll end up with probably another RFP. But, there's no definitive answer yet on what happens with the ones that we are retaining, ones that aren't sold or aren't otherwise designated.
So, my understanding is Alderman, Alderwoman descends of, that the one that you keep asking about, you have an adjacent property owner that wants to purchase it, has the RFP...
We're going to directly address that.
Okay. So, wonderful. Thank you.
Any new business? Any citizens going to address the committee?
Yeah, two signed up. Daryl Harrell.
Mayor.
Yeah, Scott Dahl, I think he was going to talk about the inaugurations coming up. I think there's legislative inaugurations tomorrow, but next week, on Monday, is the governor's inauguration.
Yeah, so, it's inauguration week in Springfield. The next seven days, we'll have a lot of statewide eyes on Springfield. Just want to reassure you that from a tourism standpoint, we'll be very welcoming. Real quick, the General Assembly gets sworn in tomorrow at 2:00, and then Governor-elect Pritzker gets sworn in at 11:00 on the 14th, next Monday. Our visitor center will have extended hours. Will be open from noon to 8:00 next Sunday. So, we welcome in those visitors coming in the night before the governor's inaugural. We've reached out to restaurants and retails establishments downtown to, hopefully, they'll open and they'll extend their hours as well. So, I want to thank DSI and the Only Restaurant Association, who are working, working with us. We have six or seven businesses, not only restaurants, but shopping as well, that will be open, have extended hours, both Sunday and Monday for the inauguration. So, I think that's great for Springfield, gives a good life for, for Springfield. We have some welcoming posters in the kiosk, just on the south side of the BOSS Center on Adam Street. So, that, that kiosk has been vacant for some time. So, you'll see posters in there, actually each month. But, for the inauguration, we have some special posters. And then, we have Lincoln and Mary Todd that will greet attendees to the inauguration on the 14th at the BOSS Center. So, all in all, I think it's a cooperation between DSI and the Only Restaurant Association. Obviously, visit Springfield, and we'll be ready for the inaugurations. Thanks.
And the other item we're trying to resurrect or have is during the spring session is have a, working with the Restaurant Association, having some type of street festival, highlighting our restaurants for the legislature when they come back. So, have a, more of a celebration and tying that relationship from the city's Springfield standpoint with the Capitol legislators.
I like it.
Any citizens to address the...
Alice Ramey?
Thank you. John, and I'll pick up my pizza tomorrow. I have three problems. Usually, I can solve them, but this time I can't. I was going down Cook Street, and it seems like the people that are picking up trash, or picking up wood and drywall and all that, do not cover their trucks. If I could have speed, I would have got the license plate. It missed my car by two inches. I understand there is a code that they have to cover their trucks, or did I not read the right law book?
That's correct.
And also, I called the police department because it was after everybody had left the office. And they did have somebody come out and pick all that up. It was really a lot. I mean, it was horrible. Then, the garbage man, he got told, "If you cannot pick up his garbage on Livingston, please find another place to pick up your garbage properly, because we're not picking up your garbage anymore." That's waste management. The other one is that we have a problem with street parking on Livingston by Channel 20. There is a sign, "You cannot park on the west side," but it doesn't make any difference. I don't think they can read or know what it means. But, there is cars that park on both sides. And I understand that there isn't a lot of parking at that building that they have for Urban League and, and all the other activities they have. But, when you're turning off Cook Street to Livingston, and it's awful hard if somebody is over on one side trying to go out, and you're trying to get in at the busiest time. It is pretty hard. We had asked the engineer, traffic engineer, to come out and check it, and she said that she was going to put up no parking all the way down to Beach Avenue, but it has not happened. So, if you could possibly check into that, I would appreciate it. And I want to thank the, I had made a complaint to the housing about a house that had a TV out in front of it, and somebody took out the inside and broke the glass all over. And I had to get my tire fixed, but it wasn't bad, because I didn't see the, how far it was on my driveway. So, it did get picked up. I want to thank the person that did that. And I want to thank CWLP for putting lights out when they were out because of a wire. And I want to thank all you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Will you please take care of it, Mayor?
We will pass that along.
Thank you.
Alice raises a, a really good point about the parking. The same situation that she talks about on Livingston, because it is a very narrow street. They park on both sides, and it makes it very difficult for traffic. But, that's the same problem that I raised a couple of weeks ago about on the side streets off of, off of Livingston, like Manor Avenue, where there's parking on both sides, and it's very difficult to navigate. And unfortunately, that's, people are, you know, still getting tickets because they say that they're parking on the sidewalk, where they're just really trying to make a way for, you know, people to navigate throughout the street. So, you know, I know that everybody, most of the people on Manor have driveways, so I don't know that we want to say, you know, no parking on the street at all. But, there has to be a happy medium on the narrower, inner-city streets where you have parking on both sides. It's, it really is a, a safety issue.
Alderman Tyler? Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do we have an executive session?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.